Seven P M.
There's a motion is our second.
Second?
Again, the motion is to meet an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one A, Purpose two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with all staff. And Purpose seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene into open session at seven P M. Is there any discussion? Which requires a roll call vote. Susie?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And a yes for me as well. We will be back at seven P M. Thank you.
Good evening, welcome back to the Tuesday, September 8, 2020, meeting of the Law Middle School Committee. We are back in open session. We will now begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Kevin, we have some correspondence.
Thank you, Ryan. All in correspondence was recorded, an email note from Ms. Maisha Lee, a reporter from the reminder asking for information on her article, an emailed letter from Karina and Matt Schouen received on August 28th, and another on August 31st regarding the reopening plan and special education services.
Thank you. We have a possible motion for the minutes.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the August 25th school committee meeting as presented.
Their motion is their second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Gia?
Yes.
Rodman?
Yes.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
We're now on to visitor comments. If there's anybody with us this evening, then we'll just speak to them. Make it known now. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to school committee announcements and recognitions. Committee members, any announcements or recognitions? Yes.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to say that I heard the textbook and Chromebook pickup at Glenbrook. And Williams went great today. I didn't hear of any others. I'm sure they went well too, but I just wanted to thank the teachers and admin for getting all that stuff together in addition to everything else that they're doing, trying to get ready for next Monday. It was super helpful and I heard a lot of great things. Thanks.
Anyone else? In a similar vein, I want to thank all the communication I'm getting regarding ninth grade orientation and the other events at the high school. Thank you to the high school administration for keeping us all informed. Very exciting time for the upcoming ninth graders. Business with guests, reopening update. Marty?
Thank you. We have a reopening update today that has focuses on a few topics. We've talked regularly about some of the, what we've called the reopening contingencies and these are the factors that we want to make sure are locked in place to ensure a successful reopening. And so we've been regularly providing you with updates on those various contingencies. And so tonight, I'd like to report on three areas for you. And those are staffing and as we've talked about that as being a, an important area that we need to be solid in, in order to have that successful reopening, we'd like to talk to you also about where we are with extracurriculars. And then Jean Fontaine, our people services director is here to provide an update as well. Chief John Dearborn may be joining us. Diane, you might have to help me out. He was otherwise occupied at a board of health meeting. So I know the committee has wanted a regular update on local and regional health metrics. So if Chief Dearborn pops into our meeting, we'll incorporate him as best we can when we can. So so those are some of the things that that we wanted to recap for the community tonight. I wanted to just mention sort of recap last week's meeting and kind of reinforce this idea that that all communities in Massachusetts are really working along this reopening continuum. This should be a familiar slide to the community at this point. We're obviously situated in the middle with the hybrid model. The committee has made it clear that, you know, we would be prepared to remove, move to a fully remote model if local he- health metrics require, but the committee has also asked us to be sure that we are ready to phase in more in-person learning if conditions allow. And so in case anyone's watching tonight who might have missed last week's meeting, I just wanted to sort of quickly summarize where we left off as a governance team. At your last meeting, the committee directed, voted to direct the administration to develop a proposal to return more students to in-person learning at a school committee meeting to be held no later than October 13th. And then if that proposal were approved, that implementation would not occur until November 2nd. And so I just wanted to sort of recap that for the community to essentially let folks know that we continue to think about what students, what grades, what groups of students we could potentially prioritize for additional in-person learning, knowing that there are a number of factors that would need to be appropriately in place to make that happen. Capacity being one, health metrics, staffing, et cetera, et cetera, all the things that we talked about last week. So a quick note on staffing, a couple of committee members had asked me to provide an update to the committee on where we are with regard to staffing. It's, there's a lot of moving parts for all school districts right now. And this is obviously created by the, by the COVID-19 conditions there, as we've talked about at previous meetings. There is the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, which requires us to provide protections and benefits to employees who need leave for their own personal sick leave or perhaps for family medical reasons. And so at a, at a high level, I just wanted to give you a little snapshot of where we are with these various moving parts. In any year with, you know, we have somewhere between 250 and 270 teachers, Mr. Mazza, somewhere in that ballpark. In any year, we have quite a few leaves of absence, retirements, resignations. This year is, is different, but you'll see that we have 12 leaves of absence, which are attributable to childcare, child rearing, or perhaps other contractual reasons. That's across all units. Unit A is our, our unit A educators, our licensed educators. We've had 10 retirements or resignations since July 1st. That number is higher than we would normally see after July 1st. Normally the resignations come in at the conclusion of the prior school year. We have a number of staff that for important medical reasons would need to work remotely and, and somewhere around 10 staff members, unit A staff members have been approved to work remotely or will be approved to work remotely. And at this stage, with only a handful of days before we begin remote learning, we've got about six vacant unit A positions across the district. Not, it's a little bit higher than normal. I think in any, in a, in most years, we're looking to fill the remaining positions before, just before the school year starts. But obviously it's been, we've been in overdrive with many of the HR related issues. Want to thank Diane Girgatt, this my assistant for kind of dutifully and professionally managing all the the paperwork that is associated with the, with the leaves of absence and the retirements and resignations and the new hires and the postings, et cetera, et cetera. And then of course, the, the town HR department headed by Erica Jolinas has done a great job pulling this all together for us as well. So that's just a quick snapshot of, of the staffing picture and you know, our, our success is obviously dependent on making sure that we've got great teachers in place. We've had a number of paraprofessionals that have had the opportunity to secure a teaching license and have been appointed to unit A positions in recent weeks. So what I'm not showing here is the, is the vacancies in our paraprofessional staff. And so Jean Fontaine, who was here with us tonight, has been working to fill those vacant positions in unit F, the para educator unit. So one of the, the staffing model that is important to us is depicted here. Again, this is a diagram that is probably familiar to you. This is at the elementary level, and this is how we've conceptualized the, the staffing arrangement that will support students at each grade level. At the core is a team of grade level teachers and supporting them would be teachers who are perhaps homebound, perhaps special educators, if, if, if appropriate. There's one related arts teacher assigned to each grade level team at the elementary level, and then paraprofessionals as available would be part of that, of that working team as well. So that, that model is something that we've continued, we've been paying close attention to. We want to make sure that it is sort of appropriately staffed and, and that it's working to support staff and students. So I can stop there for a minute if the committee has any thoughts or questions relating to staffing.
So we don't echo. So of all the openings that we're showing, 12 leaves of absence and 10 retirements, there's still only six openings at the moment. So it was 22 and now it's only six.
Not sure I'd correlate it that way. In other words, I'm not sure I'd, you know, the leaves of the absence and the retirements, I'm not sure I'd add it up to 22 and then, and then say that we have filled 12 of those positions because some of the, some of the retirements might be overlapping with leaves of absence, that kind of thing. But, but generally I think what you're saying is true that we've had to fill, you know, close to a couple dozen unit A positions and we've been successful in doing that, but there's still a couple, there's still some vacancies remaining.
Thank you. I was just wondering if the, I mean, I actually don't think this is only six to fill. I know we say only, but I think like you said, I've seen some other districts that have a lot more than that. How long do you think approximately it would take till we get those six teachers in place?
I think in, as I'm thinking through the six vacancies, I'd say we're, there's movement in most of those. And obviously we will have to have educators in place to open. And it might be that we start with a substitute until the posting closes, but I'd say, you know, confidently, I'd say that we could, that we'll be in a position to fill those positions before any students arrive in person.
That's great. Thank you. I just wanted to add one more thing. I'm hoping that when the COVID is over, that the retirements, you know, we'll be able to have some kind of celebration because they missed out on that. So hopefully we can try to combine one at some point if they're able to do that, that would be nice.
Yeah, well said. There's certainly a lot of educators that, that didn't imagine their careers ending the way they have. And I know, I know the schools always look for those opportunities to send them off and thank them for their service. So with us tonight is Jean Fontaine, our Director of People Services. And I think this was something the, the committee was interested in just kind of getting a, checking in on how we are serving students with disabilities in the midst of the pandemic and through the hybrid model. So Jean, if you can hear me and if you're unmuted, I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
Can hear you? Yep. Okay. Can you go to the next slide, Marty? So Desi, in their July 9th guidance for reopening, had special guidance for special education specifically and really wanted us to look at students that they consider to be high need students. These are students with significant disabilities and they actually gave us some good help with that. So the first step in identifying who's, who those students are that we would target to have increased in-person learning came, it comes from our own data. So our state information management system, they actually, the state gave us a report back of the students that were designated already as now is actually of the IEP process. So at the back of an IP, there are placement pages and disability pages. So what we refer to as the PL3 page actually is it outlines the student's primary disability category and also the level of need on that page. So they're really looking at students who spend the majority of their day in a special education classroom with special education teachers or related service providers. So these are students who maybe visit the general ed classroom for morning meeting or for one related art or something like that. But their primary teacher is a special education teacher. So when we got the list of students, we then looked at where they fell within our district programs. And then we, if, if one student in say a, a program, a district for high need, any of the other students that were accessing that program, we have invited in for additional in-person learning. So that's where we were able to add the other students. Want to go to the next slide, Marty? Other populations that the guidance asked us to look at that aren't necessarily special education students, but just more vulnerable learners are at risk. So our English language learners, which we did look at their levels. So Ls that are a level one or level two would be invited for some additional in-person time. Any special education students that are also English language learners would be in that group. Our homeless students, students accessing foster care, and finally, students who are struggling with remote, with accessing remote learning. So those are students who really don't have the ability to laptop, would not be able to independently operate the systems. So those are the students that we have, have targeted. So one of the big tasks that also came in this guidance was that they have asked all districts i- in the Commonwealth to reach out to every family of a student who has an IEP and have a conversation about how the last few months of learning went, get input from the family. And then what we have to do is develop a COVID-19 special education learning plan for each student. They actually, the state would like those done before students start in-person learning. And as of today, we are on track to hopefully hit that target by the end of the week. So our special education teachers during their 10 professional days that, the additional days that were granted families, talking about student needs, talking about services on the IEP and how they will fit and be delivered in this hybrid model. So students will be getting some in-person special education services and related services as well as continuing to get some remote services. But all of the services on an IEP will be delivered. And then so our students that are returning in person are coming on September 14th. So next Monday, we will be welcoming, welcoming back our preschool with six sections, three morning and three afternoon. We've adjusted the hours of the program to allow for an hour and a half cleaning period in those three classrooms while the students switch out. We are also welcoming back our link programs at all three elementary schools. So Blueberry Center. Also at the middle level, there's a program at Glenbrook and also one at Williams that is welcoming back students. And our life skills students at the high school will be returning also on the 14th. The first two weeks, we will not have students in those programs on Wednesday so that the custodial staff can really get the hang of their deep cleaning on Wednesday. And then our goal is to restart their in-person learning on the 30th for half days on Wednesdays, except for preschool, which would be a full day.
All right. I think that concludes the slides that you have, Jean. I'm wondering if the committee has any questions or feedback or direction?
Jean, thank you so much. We truly appreciate the feedback and really outlined this for us. How many students is that in each of those programs?
So it's in the preschool and including the peers. Each section is 12 students up to. So some of them may still be at 10 or 11, but about 12 per section. So the students on IEPs and their peer partners in the preschool. The elementary programs are anywhere from three to eight students in each of the link programs. The middle school programs are running between three and seven and the high school is nine.
So a total of somewhere, what would be your guess on the total number of students that are in one of these programs then mid, mid 60s?
About 75.
75?
About, about 70, about 75. Yes, there are a few that, that don't necessarily fit, but we knew that, you know, what I left out of the slides is students who use communication devices, you know, would automatically qualify also, or, you know, severe needs that maybe had done inclusion that we had to rethink some of their programming. So about 70, 75.
So I guess my one just comment overall on this is whenever we're thinking about the previous side that Dr. O'Shea showed on the October 13th, is I know these are D E S I guidelines and, you know, what we're using to to define these, but I'd really, you know, really push the administration to think about that October 13th plan and what it looks like specifically for these groups and how we get more students in my, in my opinion. I get that we're following D E S I, but we're not really following D E S I in our other plans. So you know, D E S I told us to be three feet away. We all said, no, we're going to do six. So it doesn't mean just because I think D E S I said it, I don't think that's the Bible. Cause we're picking CDC or D E S I in our other plan on some pretty big topics. So I would really challenge us on this October 13th plan as to how we get more in-person learning for a higher percentage of the population that has a need, you know, whether 75% or whatever it ends up being, I just would really challenge us to do more here and not completely follow what D E S I is saying. I think sometimes you got to look at things and go, what makes sense and what doesn't make sense? And kind of push this a little bit, in my opinion.
So if I can speak to that for a moment, we're following, it's actually, we couldn't the D E S I guideline. I mean, we're, we're, we're trying to make that fit our own district. So you know, it's not a hundred percent of what they're doing. But when we go to the six foot distance, that limits the number of seats in a classroom. Because we have such a high inclusion rate for our students with special education, there are only so many spaces now in a classroom. So the more students that I identify and bring back, I need to be able to place them into a classroom because they don't necessarily come out to a resource room. So it's, it's really a more complex thing. There's a lot more to it than just saying we, we want, I want to bring back every student. I, you know, I truly believe that all students on an IEP learn better in person and all students in general do. But at the six foot distance, it becomes a spacing issue and some of our resource rooms are very small spaces. So when we're bringing students for specialized instruction in a small group outside of the classroom, our space is now limited. So it's more of a space issue than a want or, you know, we're certainly not looking at the D E S I guidance as a way to do the minimum. I just want to be clear. It's, it's more about staffing and spacing.
Got it. Yeah. And I was saying, maybe it isn't even, maybe we just get more creative with this group in that we're going to have cohorts of students, both A and B, you know, as we're thinking through, and I don't know all the answer. I'm just, you know, speaking out loud here is whenever we get to that October 13th and we're thinking through those groups that we need to think through other options. It might not be like what you're saying, Jean. It might not be a possibility to pull, pull them out of the classroom, but it might be a possibility to get them four days a week. I don't know. You know, we, it's something that I really challenge the group to think about when we think about this group of students.
Definitely have been thinking and I've been working with the special education supervisors. So it would be our goal to bring this initial group back and then be thinking about ways to increase that. Absolutely. We're already discussing that.
Any other questions for Jean?
Thank you. Jean, I think I just need some clarification on the slide that says other students to consider for increased in-person learning. And there's a list there. And then on the last page, the slide that says students returning to in-person learning four days per week on 9/14. So do those groups overlap? So I don't know if I'm confused or reading it incorrectly. When it says other students to consider for increased in-person learning, English language learners, special ed ELS, homeless students, foster care students, students struggling with accessing remote learning. And then the part that says students returning to in-person learning. So.
Okay. So of that other list, some of them are embedded into these groups and then some will have increased learning, but maybe not for full days a week. So they may have individual sessions.
At their house?
No, at school. So if a student, for example, if you took an English language learner who may be in cohort A, so they come to school on Monday, Tuesday. Have somebody on this day Friday coming in for a session, not necessarily accessing the classroom, but accessing the ESL teacher. And we're in the, still in the process of developing all that scheduling.
So we're, I know these are D E S I like, they're not requirements, recommendations. But there will be students in that group that are not receiving the D E S I recommendations.
No, we've considered all of those groups and have addressed those groups the best that we can at this time.
Okay, thanks.
And then Jean, tell me if I'm phrasing this wrong, but you know, it's, it's really a fluid arrangement for you in the sense that you're continually reviewing the needs of students, particularly the ones that are on the slide that we're showing right now, that you're regularly reviewing their needs and prioritizing them for in-person learning, even if it's in the limited way that you described that with the, with the, you know, one day a week on their off, off cohort days.
Right. So I have reached out to many of these groups, families. These are small cohorts. Here, you know, we have a very small L population, very small homeless and foster care population. So I'm hesitant to speak too much to it for that reason.
Thank you, Suzy.
Thank you, Jean. I am, given that, you know, we had seven, roughly had 75 students in that first cohort that's returning. And then you have small populations here. I wonder if you can give us an idea of the total number of students requiring special services in the district? So we kind of have an idea like who we're not servicing.
Yeah. So let me be clear, we're servicing every student who's on an IEP because they're at least coming in for their hybrid days if the, if their family has selected that. So every student on an IEP is getting their services. So that's a big, you know, a big shift from, from, you know, last spring. So we currently have 576 students on an IEP. So we're servicing about 15%.
So students who maybe have, you know, I'm thinking of the, the primary, you know, the elementary level students who have speech and language services, are, are they going to be able to get those when they're in person?
They're getting, they're going to get a combination of both. So depending on the level of their need and they'll have in-person and we're also scheduling some remote if it makes sense. Cause again, we have students that are selecting, you know, families have chosen the cohort C and we have to deliver their special education services remotely. So trying to engage those students maybe with some in-person groups as well. But no, all of the IEP services will be delivered to all students. We've, you know, been asked to target the neediest of our population, which I think 15% is actually you know, a pretty good amount to start with, you know, to, to get them back, get them and again, look for opportunities to increase that.
One more follow-up. And yes, thank you. And, and you know, it's understandable that this is, this is, you know, more than complex and challenging, you know, to, to manage. I, I think one of the, one of the concerns that we've heard, you know, in particular is about, you know, students who maybe don't fall into these categories that have been prioritized in terms of their learning, you know, their learning challenges. But students with multiple, you know, levels of disability who are really struggling with remote, you know, learning. And, you know, I just, I, I feel a need to just, you know, bring that to the forefront that they might not fall into the, the first group, they might not fall into the second group, but they're, but they're still, you know, experiencing great challenge. So I, I concur with Jamie that, you know, our hope is that on October 13th, we can have a real idea and plan of how to, you know, go about that. Because I, I do think it's, 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 it's a, it's a challenge for both the children as well as their, their families at home and anybody who's at home trying to support that. So I, I appreciate all of your efforts and, and all that you're doing to really scour the, the, the list of students and see who we can bring back. I just wanted to make clear that, you know, lots of people have lots of concerns about, you know, their, their kids' education. So thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Just one last comment. You only have to, I'm, I'm just kind of, just to make sure you, everyone was following what I was saying is whenever we get to this point on October 13th or whatever point in time, I think even though it's a very difficult discussion to have, you should have the discussion of, you know, and I won't single out any one program, but you look at an entire school, here's all the services. Do we want to take care of the special ed and create extra room within the school for the special ed? Or do we want to do this? And you have to have that discussion. I know it's uncomfortable and it's not fun. But the reality is, is we've got to look at this group and at least understand what we're doing. Specifically our October 13th, but I think overall in general, I think it's just fair. You know, to know, you know, what, what we're choosing over the other, if we need space, we should be at least discussing. We're using the space for this. Is that right? I mean, we're, is that what we want? You know, and obviously let the committee, you know, figure out what the right direction is or isn't, or the administration. Hopefully everybody followed more of what I was trying to say is I just don't want to leave this group behind just because we're saying we don't have enough space. So. Go ahead, Marty.
I think certainly, Jean, as much as anyone would love to see more of our students with learning disabilities be back with us for in-person learning. I think as we make those decisions, I think we, we need to be true to the, to the inclusion models that we have in place and that as you, you know, we want to be careful about creating separate, non-inclusive arrangements for special education students. So anytime we prioritize any, any students with disabilities for in-person learning, we've got to do it in a way that's consistent with their IEPs and inconsistent with the inclusion goals that we have for them. So that's a, that's a really important consideration that we don't want to create. We don't want to break down the, the, the great strides we've made in terms of including students with disabilities in regular education. So I hope I'm, Jean, if there's a more artful way to say that.
I think when you look at the D E S I guidance and if you've read, you know, read that, the very first sentence is about least restrictive environment and making sure that we're keeping students and we're educating our students with disabilities in the least restrictive environment. Which for the majority of our students in Long Meadow is the general ed classroom. So we can't just say, oh, you're on an IEP and you've been in the general ed classroom, but now because of this, we're going to pull you out and put you somewhere else. So it's how we support these students in this hybrid model. You know, with the two days on and the three days remote, the best that we can right now. I think once we get students back and we have them in front of our special educators, they will do a phenomenal job of figuring out where students are at, what students are, you know, we're, we're very and I do think that our next pair of students that will, you know, look at to bring back will, you know, will know who those kids are fairly quickly once we get them back because we had many students that did very well with remote learning. You know, I mean, it's not an all or nothing. And I think once we get our kids back and we get some benchmarks on them and figure out where they're at and who is really struggling, then we can start looking at what makes sense for each student and, and how we increase their participation in some way. So we're, you know, I think some of this is already underway. And, you know, and happy to report back on the 13th.
Thank you, Pram.
I said, I want to follow up question. Um, I think it's great that we have so many inclusion classes. I think that's amazing and a testament to the teaching that's going on. I just was wondering, so are all the students that aren't coming back four days a week on nine fourteen? In the inclusion program?
No. No, we do still have some programs that, because they're a high level of inclusion, so they don't have a full. You know, a full day of pullout, some some of those students are starting. And those would be the the students we were already talking about, how do we get the rest of our program students in? So. Thank you.
Thanks, Jean. Okay. So the the last thing that we'd like to talk to you about, unless Chief Dearborn is able to join us to give us a little. Oh, he is here, all right. Wonderful, Chief Dearborn, thanks for joining us. And we know you've had a busy night and you were with the Board of Health perhaps earlier this evening. So if you're able to provide the committee with a little snapshot of the. Health metrics locally, regionally, or any any information that you think is relevant to our ongoing decision making.
Thank you, Superintendent, and I apologize for being late. I've had the select board prior to you and then I was down the river. With my guys assisting somebody that had a little issue out there. So I've been bouncing bouncing tonight. Currently, our local numbers look great. We continue to be in low risk or the gray category if you re-watches the color coded map. That category means that we have less than five cases. Based on the public health data as of today, we have one active case in town. I say that and just, but I also always reiterate. And we still need to. Continue with the protective stance and all the actions we're taking is in, by any estimate, it seems to be working. And our cases to our neighbors. All around us also seem to be improving. Esau Meadows in in the gray color. Springfield's improving every week. And then, so generally, all the communities around us, you know, seem to be improving, some at different paces. Some of it's based on population and other circumstances. But generally in the town here, I'm very, very encouraged by it. We do have a few other indicators we're watching, some of our private schools have opened. So we've, they're in week, they're starting week three with no issues so far. So so that's a good indicator in my mind. I know it's a much smaller population than the the public schools, but. I kind of look look at those as the first phase of your first phase, so. If that makes any sense, so. So I'm very encouraged. We've been working really hard with all the aspects of the school, schools and the facilities, and I think we're making good progress. I don't have any, for my level, any any big concerns. I think the facilities will be ready, if they're not already. You know, we still get some new guidances in, it seems like daily. But we're doing our best to interpret those and identify the changes and then react to them in conjunction with our partners at the school. Certainly answer any questions.
And as as you're gathering your questions, I want to thank Chief Dearborn and COVID Compliance Officer Andy Fraser and. Carl Viera, the infectious disease specialist for joining. An admin meeting last week and we spent about three hours. Going through the questions that the administrators have collected from teachers, everything relating to. Mask breaks to PPE to to snack time to movement around the building. And so they were able to provide, along with Beverly Hershaw, and they were able to provide us with some some firm answers to. A lot of important safety protocol type questions. So thanks, Chief, for your time last Wednesday morning. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the chief?
Thank you, Chief.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take off. You know, my my email's out there, if anybody has any questions during the week, feel free to ring me up. So thank you.
And then the last thing that we told the committee we would touch on, and and really, it's a fairly brief discussion, I'd say. Relates to extracurriculars. I think since your last meeting, or maybe it was on the eve of your last meeting, the extracurricular guidance came out. And so we're we're starting to work with the administrative team on that. Essentially, bottom line is that, you know, the recommendation is wherever feasible. To start with extracurriculars, student activities virtually, whenever possible, whenever feasible. And that's, right now, that's the approach that we're taking. Mr. Maza is sort of polling the principals to have them find out what activities. Can continue to run virtually, and I know the advisors to all those clubs and activities are. Thinking creatively about how to sustain those activities for students. We know that they're a huge part of their connection to school and the connection to their teachers and to one another. So we'll, we'll continue to work on that. I think, you know, the the service clubs, I think, can continue to do their work. There's, there's lots of sort of great virtual or online fundraising that can be done. Mentoring programs, gardening projects, other outdoor activities. So there's a, there's a range of service type activities that we think can continue. And so, you know, as, once we've gathered that information, we'd be certain to report back to the committee on on the clubs and activities that we. Expect to continue to run in the coming year. And a lot of the guidance sort of follows along with the sport and the sport intermural sports. Or inter-school sports guidance that we previously received as well. So not a lot to report, other than to tell you that we are. Going to put together the list of activities that can be sustained amidst the pandemic. Happy to take any, any questions or direction that the committee might have in in that area.
So. Club can be run remotely, that that's going to happen right away?
Yeah, assuming that there's an advisor that is there to work with them. The right away part, I think, is we'll have to really go through the entire list of activities to. Get some feedback from the principals and the advisors on how those activities will run. And to make sure that they're being run safely. Certainly, if it's a virtual arrangement, that that's an easy, quick decision. But our intention would be to get the activities, the clubs and activities up and running as quick as possible. Yeah.
Kevin next.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Marty, thank you for this.
Thank you, Marty, just a couple of questions. Have we shared this with with families yet?
School-based reopening plans make reference to extracurriculars and indicate that those will be run virtually. Sorry, I'm getting some feedback. And so it's in the school-based reopening plans and then the Desi guidance is posted to our district website as well.
I guess I I'm curious. The, what's in this document? Are these recommendations or requirements? Because some of the things are very specific, right? Where they say, and I think they reiterate some of the state guidelines that are not just school guidelines, they're just state guidelines. You can't have more than twenty five people in a single enclosed indoor space. You can't have more than fifty people in a single outdoor space. And they say very clearly, indoor performances, including theater, band or orchestra, are not permitted at this time. But maybe in the future in accordance with state guidelines, right? So to me, this seemed like there was much more clear guidelines around some specific things that I know I hadn't seen before. And I just think it's important for families and teachers and educators to to know that, again, to me, this seemed more. Detailed than what we had seen previously.
That makes sense that we would want to get that out with a greater degree of specificity. I mean, as parents that are are interested in the music performances or. Or other gatherings after school, so we can, we'll be sure to get that out.
And and just my my final point, there's also something in here about field trips and it seems pretty clear that like we're not doing field trips.
Yeah.
Is that fair to say?
Yeah. Certainly, there's no international trips being planned, there's no out of state trips being planned. And teachers right now are focusing on virtual field trips even. So I don't anticipate at this point that there would be any local travel, walking field trips perhaps. Down to the stream or the park or in the town green, but nothing that involves bus travel. Until further notice.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I just. For the students that aren't participating in athletics, it just seems odd that the. State would put out the guidance. Of course, I voted for athletics and I do think we should have athletics. But the state says non-athletic student group meetings are likely to involve increased mixing between student cohorts. I just find that. Odd because we'll actually be going to other towns, other towns will be coming to us. To play sports, which, as I said, I support. But it just seems a bit odd to me that. Our own students can't gather. In the school if they follow these guidelines. So for the students who aren't playing sports. And are very heavily involved in clubs, which we have many, many students who are in that position. Maybe one season, maybe it's all three. You know, I I don't think this is necessarily fair to them. Obviously, we have to follow what they say, but it doesn't seem to line up for me. Like I said, I'm glad we're having the sports, but it doesn't really, the rationale doesn't sit well with me.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree. I think there's some incongruity there. I think the distinction is that a lot of the inter-school. Extracurricular activities are held indoor. So, you know, Math Olympiad or Schools Match Wits or other activities where kids are. Competing against other schools inside as opposed to outdoors. So whether that, whether that provides any, you know, reconciliation between the two, who knows? But I I do see the incongruity that you're talking about.
It doesn't really provide that because I believe we are still playing volleyball. Yeah.
Help me out, Mr. Maza, I don't know if we've made any final volleyball is, yeah.
Which is also indoors. And in addition to that. If we did have some groups that could meet the requirement of, you know, the twenty five percent or less than that. And. We have so many extracurricular activities that don't involve going to another school or having another school come to us. Just seems, it would be fair to let them meet if they could satisfy the state guidelines.
Yeah, I think I frankly welcome the sort of direction from the committee to explore opportunities for in-person extracurriculars. If the if the committee's comfortable with that, we can explore that. I think the, my, and and I would be interested in providing those in-person activities. My hesitation would be around the cleaning of facilities. So if you have. Students who are participating in a gymnasium as a, you know, that that presents one set of cleaning challenges. But if they're in classrooms, let's say, to do. You know, a academic extracurricular that that might create some challenges around cleaning surfaces and cleaning classrooms. But I'd welcome, you know, I'm seeing some confirmation here from the committee. I'd welcome the encouragement, the direction to try to find some opportunities for in-person extracurriculars. Right now, we've just aired on the side of saying we're we're looking at virtual opportunities for students. But if that's something the committee wants us to go back and see what we can do, I'd I'd welcome that.
I think it's pretty logical to think start virtual.
Thanks, Ryan. Yeah, I think to Superintendent's question and to Bronwyn's point. I was also thinking the same thing and talking to, you know, to my children about the, you know, they were asking the same question that you were asking Bronwyn. I guess I just assumed because it's recommendations and it says wherever feasible that we were going to be looking into in-person extracurriculars. Thank you for offering that, Superintendent.
Any other questions about that? Okay, I don't see anything else. That's it for updates, yes? The next up, we have superintendent report.
Nothing further.
That better? If more than one person is unmuted, the echo causes a problem, so we can all pay attention. The, obviously, the. The pandemic is the biggest thing on everybody's mind right now, but we have been attempting to get a retreat and have a goals meeting set up. And one thing that I think I'd like to put back on the plate of the administration to get back to us is the. How we're going to get anti-racism in the curriculum is something that obviously has not gone away. It's yet again in the news, another person gets shot. This just has to, it has to be something that we are talking about and teaching. So I'd really love to us to get back to that. I know that it's on a bunch of people's suggestions for goals. So it's likely something that we as a committee are going to vote on, and I'm hoping we do. And I would just like to hear from the administration how that's being looked at and what movement we have made in that area. Sometime soon. That's my report, so, yeah. You're muted, so nobody can hear you.
If you want a quick update on it, I can give you one now, but at least for everyone, I haven't told Tom or Marty it either. But we loved a better lesson so much this summer that they are offering some anti-racist virtual PD. That I'm hoping we can take advantage of on October thirteenth. So I was pretty excited to hear the head develop that and try to sell to the rest of the admin team as soon as we have time to sit together and have five minutes. But definitely something that I would love to dive into.
I definitely appreciate a, like a full update on what's going on, thank you. Student report, Bronwyn.
Nothing for me tonight, but I should have some more updates once our student committee starts to meet virtually, so.
Hopefully, you guys can maybe meet in person at some point if that can be worked out.
Yeah, definitely, I hope so.
LPVC, any reports?
No, we have a meeting in a couple of weeks.
Energy and sustainability? No, open space? Nope. And no reports from any of the subcommittees, which means we are. Sorry to shock everybody, but we wrapped up. Unusual, and we do not have a meeting scheduled for next week, is that correct?
That's right.
Another shocking piece of, and so there was a possible motion on the floor.
I move that the school committee adjourn the September eighth, twenty twenty school committee meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do roll call vote, Suzy?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Kiana?
Yes.
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Jamie? Jamie said yes, and yes for me as well. Thank you, folks. See you next time.